Like this, so I was out for probably three hours maybe yesterday. I was being cold, you know, cold. I think he missed the memory of me out there. And in the summer, I love it, you can get shade, it's not too bad, you know. And for the Florida.
I would like to also order a regular school board meeting, part and file school business number seventy-one, Tuesday, January tenth, twenty twenty-three. It was six oh five P M. More coffee?
For Simpson or for Moot?
And computers? Okay, now it's Santos and Moot. I believe this is the United States of America. The day of the Lord, the Lord is saved, and we worship him.
And the Lord is with us.
And is that a motion to approve the adoption agenda?
Um, I would approve the adoption.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Santos and agenda. A demand for a minimum in December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular scheduled board meeting, I love January second, twenty twenty-three, special board meeting. Charged with support and need to know what's in the papers.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number six. We need organization for minimum. Item A, election of chairman.
I'm sure I knew that we, we, I would give this a pass.
Fair enough. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the minimum fair. Election of vice chair.
I'm sure I knew that we, we, Simpson.
I'd like to, can I say something?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'd like to second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Alright, board consensus will be vice chair. We see a lot of treasure, so I have a motion to.
I'm sure I knew that we, we, position higher than we do.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, item B, election of board president.
I'm sure I knew that we, we, position higher than we do.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, established city authorities will be a colleague, gave glad citizens a way of council and board project.
I'm sure I knew that we established city authorities and city colleagues, they're going to have. And then in function and board project.
Second? All in favor? Sign code of ethics. Yes, please. Aye. Okay, yes. Sign code of ethics. Is that a motion? To approve the ethics?
Also, I would do any of that.
Please sign? Okay. Item G, establish board meeting date. In our board packets, we can re- debate the school board's four.
A lot of people have been debating, going to the way they would argue, as the second student. So, you know, suppose they're waiting the second student, they're not going to the area, which is the case, if you want to go to the other side of the building, or actually go to the town in the area. In the following year. Nine hundred and four, I think, one by the board. And, uh, it's probably been a bit long in the future. We need to keep them. And our agenda has to be out on Friday. And now with us. You know, we've been having maybe these documents and things like that. And now that we posted on top. Isn't possible, this is just a thought, that we need not leave these to a Wednesday. So that we can post on Monday, so we want to give them to the paper. All the documents, everything that we need, we're posting to the community that, um, you know, monthly until Wednesday, we need the documents. Sometimes there are a lot of things, not likely to be done. But that's just a thought, like moving to Wednesday, they have given the text we the most. And then, I mean, the board will give it back with you. One of the thoughts on working with that day, so that we don't post on Friday because then. You see, you're wrong back. I don't see how that would be helpful, but it should work. I was just looking through the calendar, I'm sure.
Is that?
Looking to stand around. Yeah, I was thinking. If you really were to do it on Sunday now, but we're gonna do it on Friday. Then this is a lot better. It can be better. I mean, just, definitely you could do it on Sunday now, but we're gonna do it on Friday. Then this is a lot better. But that's, 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 um, um. Thursday, that's just, like, Thursday, Friday, we have to move it every time they vote, and look at the agenda, stuff like that. Sometimes they just don't have time to do that. I have a long, I have a, um, great movement.
Yeah, no problem.
So, so the motion of we would, I would find, um, moving next to the second, then third. If we want, if you want, if you got time to do it, if you got any time to do it. Yeah, it's fine with me, I don't have a problem with it. We, we have, everybody has more time, we have to do it before, if we're reporting, then. I mean, that was a big change, uh, ever since I come to the board, we need some, please, they are, but, and it was great, I think the board a few years ago, it was pretty, it seemed like a poor thing. But we do know that, and, and now with all these things going on, um. That's just a thought, and, and, you know, I didn't do it, I didn't. Only to give up. No, but, but I think, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm. So, do you understand this thing? We, we have, but we have to, in, in both.
I think you got to go in a different place. Do you have a problem with you? I think Dave and I are good with, you got to go.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make, we, we, we make all of our board, regular board meetings to the second Wednesday.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll be moving. Twenty twenty-three, we're moving to the second thing.
Now, also, we need one, two more, we need another. That was boost to be on progress, you know, yeah, giving progress, so we need to, what's it, the new one? Um, we did it in July, my first year, and last year was in May, and so. So, um, let's talk about. What you do in, 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 also, we need to consider, um, March, April, in that May time, there's a lot of. You know, um. Contracts and those kind of things. How difficult is that, is that May meeting, as in, um, then? Everyone knows, we, we, we should find that. My opinion, due to the lack of, of this staff. But those are things to consider, of, of, of. This, this is a, I'm, I'm finding it quite. And I feel it's, um, it's, 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 it's. You know, my thing may be, um, only, um, I think, um.
You're down. Okay. Item G, that notice, how the community can be located, location, so that the board can proceed to where, and be outside. First location, right, the D U library, the food property, and one location.
We've not discussed the other day, um, if, at, up in Logan, you know, that, it's, um, where. Would it be better if we made a station, or if we constructed something on the bank, and school property, that we could place it up there? In the market, which, we just have that power, and we said, it's better. It's what we do.
So we shared all that with you. They took their notes and they said they would take it back, so.
Did you follow up to that or did you?
They haven't scheduled a follow-up, but you know, we're, I'm going to another meeting tomorrow. Uh, our monthly meeting, we're considering the session meetings, I'll see if we can, you know, that's just matter. I'll bring it back.
Do you have a, some, some demands of new things that colleagues do, actually do in this area? What do you do in this area?
Oh, nobody else.
Okay, these are, these are, uh, that's a human.
Uh, the, you might, you're very young.
I can speak very loud. The report cards, uh, the report cards were sent out yesterday. And all, uh, pretty much, and so there was seventeen that's, uh, coming in that would be placed on the page. Uh, if you want to fill out the office, you have to, you know, uh, um.
Uh, we, let's not pretend that they're, uh, the chicken dog had, you know.
Mister Pernie? So there's a point, uh, um, the, uh, kind of thing, uh, the process, um, last week is very important this week. Uh, the, uh, uh, the, uh, the bomb, the, uh, really, uh, like, this week has been, uh, 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 uh. And I think that, uh, uh, one thing, one thing, uh, 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 uh. But that's true, and, uh, 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 uh.
Do you have anything?
Uh, okay. Maybe if I remember correctly, it's about, uh, the, uh, one, uh, 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 uh. So it's, uh, such a crazy shit to come about, too. Do you have any idea why you think it's, uh, you might not know that, uh?
It was a beginning fund balance of nine million forty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. Projected budget is four million ten. Projected expenses are three point eight million ten. And projected ending fund balance of one hundred and ninety-five six hundred and seventy-six dollars. So that was the budget. We were within the operating for that year. And as we went through the year, it's more than analysis. And I would say about eight to ten hours. Um, it's a two email, you can probably do that. But point number one that we mentioned in four months, we expect that we need to determine by the monthly scheme, not the August season, that I should calculate the budget. And I don't know if it is see with the budget or not. You know, you look at it, you know, I remember off the top of my head, it was a particular account.
I remember that. So I remember you looked at three years, you prepared three years. And one year was like one million, one million, and then it's like what did you get? Remember that?
But it does not exceed the budget amount, let's exceed like what's going to fly in here.
Right, and I remember Ryan asking, what could you spend that budget for two? Like how big those one year, three year budget? But he didn't. And then just recalling him, so I remember Ryan asking to have detailed information about that huge.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and that was pretty big.
Yeah.
Where did that, like, you know, there's a lot?
That was the email I sent him. I used to give it very, um, it's related to the, um, all, all, all work and stuff.
And I remember Ryan saying that those were already budgeted. The, the items were already budgeted, it's, it's happened, it's not showing up, it's not. And, and this is just, mm, going back.
I mean, all these people did it, I think. I mean, they're, 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 I mean, this is, this is, this is, I understand, what is done, like, because of the female, because of, because of, oh, yeah. And, and if we go further than that, I'd be, I'd be, uh, kind of, I'm sorry. So this is our, we did not go over the budget. And then that's why I was about to explain. The, the budget call for us to spend, three point eight million, we only spent three point four million. So we actually spent four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that, for that three budget call. So it's probably just happening more in the entire year in the fund balance, in the bank. So we operated within the budget and we were good.
I believe Mr. President, Jeff, was, was Ryan wanting to know, for that.
I would, we can easily go back and do four, anything, anything.
So, okay, so going all this together, you want to know where these expenses came from, and then, and then, right? And then, mm, you.
Although we can make a note of it, it's all, it's all, it's all, it's all. But keep telling what you want out of it. How you wanna, you wanna know what all the maintenance expenses were for twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Really?
I mean, I think it's a lot of dollars. So we, uh, we got ten dollars, so ten is definitely, uh, fifty, or, you say, um, so, so it's not, because it's sometimes, it's a, um, you, you need to be something, it's, like, sometimes, you know. Well, this, please, so the very first time, the, 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 so, if you prove it, you're, 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 you're. Now, here, um, we know, we expect to have, this thirteen months of improvement. In place for this, like, I need to something to, and this is a whole other, you need to have three months, something, right? And it's not, only that's a lot, but it's also, it's, it's, it's. Right, man. Oh, yeah, God, this is like a boxy mall.
Three times, right?
Yeah, something that's, 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 yeah. And I think, you know, you're, 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 you're. I think the only kind of bar is three months, which would be around seven hundred thousand dollars. And you need six, six hundred and ninety, six hundred and ninety.
Do you guys need to talk on this?
We don't take it, you know, you, 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 so, so I might have, if you count, if you mean, if you count, okay. Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Right. I remember a lot of the executive section. The subsection, the, the. And, and the executive section, it measures of the public part, including the, 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 the. The motion to go to executive sub-section shall identify the specific subsections of this section that authorize the executive action. There shall be a roll call, there will be motion, and the vote shall be supported in the. And the executive section shall be authorized by these users of the government's property, and the executive section will be. A, pursuant to seventy-four dash two oh six, more substantial A, to consider hiring a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, wherein the respective policies and individuals are devaluing the evidence as well in the consideration. B, pursuant to seventy-four two oh six, subsection B, considered an evaluation of this school or discipline, uh, or whether complaints or charges brought against the public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, or public school students. D, pursuant to seventy-four dash two oh six, subsection B, to consider records that are exempt from this school year as provided in chapter one, I assume, or I would say.
Okay.
Then second?
Second.
Okay, um, dinner?
Um, um. I'm sure, I'm new at the school, so I don't know.
Our dinner?
Um, um.
They have a version two, a dinner.
Um, new to the. Second?
Um, dinner?
Um. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.